No, just kind of drug it out. Kind of drug it out, you know, just.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm fine. All right.
So that's when I drove up.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, I took about five minutes to hit every light I could coming into the area. Where I used to have this peninsula, it's the other way around. I mean, it goes, that part of them extends out further than the rest of the city does, so I had more stoplights and stopways.
What did I tell him?
Because I never pick green on that.
I don't want to be picked at.
What did I tell him?
Yeah, I hit a green light, and then I get up to the, and it goes, this is red, so I have to wait until I go across. My wife and I decided it was faster for us to go down, drive a mile and a half south in 400, and go across 99 to the north. Is that where we weren't going through Sultana and Dinuba, which is growing? So much on stoplights in Dinuba, and then there's some of this traffic on the 416. Did you see this? We didn't zip along at 400, and of course, you know with 99. Some of that distance as far as 800 is actually fast. It was about three miles. Not cool three miles, because our diagonal plan.
A lot of the folks that live over on the southeast side of town, over by Lover's Lane and the freeway.
It's over a billion dollars. Folks to go across. Oh, yeah, Caldwell.
Over to Caldwell and go all the way over to, you know, Santa Fe Airport or something before they come in.
What's about time, you know, if it takes your...
My volume is mute here.
County has a lot of billions of dollars on dairy.
Not all of it.
That's right. Okay, gentlemen, are we about ready? Well, she isn't.
All righty, Madam Chair.
Good, well, good morning, then. The meeting will come to order, and welcome to the April 29, 2008, Meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please stand and join the board and I as we salute the flag, and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. Number one on our agenda, I see, we have the Ag Commissioner slash Sealer here to give us our annual crop report. I asked him if he brought us samples of the crops.
I wanted to.
He brought us pictures, he brought us pictures of the samples of the crops.
Make us salivate.
And I don't know about you guys, but on my way driving in today, I was playing a little game called "How Many Crops Did I Pass?" You'll tell us, right?
Oh, close to it.
I played that game today as well. Zero.
Well, there could have been some hidden crops that you're looking for anyway, but you didn't see those crops, but they're out there. All right, enough of this nonsense. Good morning, Mr. Kunkel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and good morning, Mr. So, this is one of the things we like to do every year, a presentation of the annual crop report. We do it for a lot of reasons. We do it because it's required by law, but we do it because it's an interesting kind of thing to do that showcases agribusiness in Tulare County. And as we go through it, think up any kind of questions that you have, we'll have a chance at the end to ask some. I'll, you'll see the cover, we've given each of you one, and the cover this year features blueberries, we always feature some sort of crop. We went through a debate at our office early on about whether to do corn, which is an enormously valuable crop to Tulare County, and you've all seen all the interest in corn, and we'll talk about that when we talk about some of the other crops. But we found a cooler-looking picture of blueberries, and so we just, so that's the debate that went on that resulted in the crop report. And blueberries are kind of a coming thing in Tulare County, and I'll talk a little bit about that, too.
Well, you didn't want to be too corny.
Oh.
Not that you tend to be, Mr. Ag Commissioners.
As early as it is, that was good. All right. I'll start off by characterizing, you know, 2007 is the crop year that we're talking about, and it got off to a horrible start. I remember January, the few days surrounding January 12th, which is one of the coldest days, we had the third hundred-year freeze in the last 16 years. I love that, they call them hundred-year freezes, and we seem to have them eight years apart now since December of 90.
Global warming's a horrible thing. Global warming's a horrible thing.
Exactly. And so we were huddled around the table talking to citrus growers, our people were out early in the morning, and some of these pictures kind of reflect that. And one of, one of the, the two stories for the 2007 crop report are the resiliency and the strength of citrus even when their production is way down, and then the strength in the dairy business, which of course, that is what drives the economic engine in Tulare County. I also want to thank Bob Ludikins, who gave us some of these pictures of some of the very cold conditions. As you know, Bob has Ellie Cook Nursery out there. He's quite a good photographer, and so fortunately, we've gotten beyond that now. And one of the ironies is, when we talk about freezes or we talk about recoveries, we're always talking about things that happened a year ago. So right now, I'm very pleased to notice that we didn't have the kind of freezing citrus that we had to deal with at the start of 2007. Just some disclaimers. I always emphasize that what you see in the crop report is gross ag product, and it doesn't represent net product. Like, you know, you've heard my story a million times, if it costs you a dollar to produce something, but it costs you $2 to grow it, if you sell something for a dollar, but it costs you $2 to grow it, you could be losing money, and we'd still report the dollar value of the crop. And so all the inputs go up. That's, that's kind of typical. It gets, it gets used by a lot of people, and so even reporting the gross value is very helpful. It goes to legislators, policymakers, grower organizations, insurance companies, attorneys, news media, and it's the basis when we do disaster claims, and is used to calculate some of the benefits that ensue. Insurance companies always call us up when there's, when there's some sort of a problem. The, I want to thank the people that we get the data from, and we get it from all kinds of sources. Some of them we report directly, like milk, for example, we get directly from the Milk Advisory Board, we just report that figure, there's no manipulation of it. But some of it, like oranges, we get by our inspectors going to, from packing house to packing house, and so we have over 50 sources of information. And then when our folks put that together, they actually do a really complex process of weighted averages. So in some district that has more citrus, for example, its input weighs relatively more than the rest of them. When we used to do it on an adding machine, we'd, you know, I tell you, one time I think we saved up the tape, and you could actually march around the building with the adding machine tape from all the figures, and that's, it's kind of hilarious, but it means there's an enormous amount of work that goes into this. And we try to make it as accurate as we can. For some of the sources of data, we get extraordinarily good information, and for some, we do the best we can with limited information. The other thing, I want to introduce a couple of people that are here now. Marilyn Kenosha is the deputy in charge of the division that's fruit and vegetables and statistics and so forth, that's Marilyn right there. So she's kind of responsible, and I tell her, you know, what I live for is blaming her for stuff. And then Melinda Mills, stand up, Melinda. Melinda does a fabulous job and is the person, the single person most responsible for compiling the crop report. And Melinda, I want to point out, is one of those kind of people that anticipates everything that I could possibly ask for. I mean, when I get ready to do this presentation, I, you know, I go, "Oh, my gosh, I'm going to need the top five crops." Yeah, here you go, you know. "Oh, my gosh, I need that." Well, here you go. And she's already done all of that stuff. She's, she's one of those employees that takes ownership, makes that project her own, and does an outstanding job, and I want to thank her for it. Also, Dennis Haynes, our staff biologist, the bug guy, most of you know Dennis. He's been doing it a long time, and he helps check figures and helps with some of the, there's a lot of manipulation that goes into what happens with grapes, you know. We have Thompson seedless, for example, can go one of four ways, and so you have to portion whether it's for juice, or for winery, or for fresh, or for raisins, or whatever, and Dennis helps figure that out. And then also, I want to thank Tulare County Duplicating, because some years ago, we used to do this, we used to farm this out to a commercial printer, and some years ago, Duplicating was able to start doing this in-house, and we've got excellent service. I mean, just outstanding. The turnaround time is short, the quality, I think, is very good. So I want to thank everybody at Duplicating for the good job that they do. There's just a couple of farm facts, and I throw these up there from the Census of Agriculture. And, and one of the things that I like to point out is, you don't hear people that are not particularly familiar with Tulare County, I hear it all the time. "Oh, Tulare County, that's all big corporate farms, that's who's out there." Well, the truth is, of that 5,738 farms, 2,295 of those are in the range of 10 to 49 acres. So, yeah, we have some large farms, but, but to sort of characterize it, we only have 238 of them with more than 1,000 acres. So, really, there's an awful lot of what you call small family farms in Tulare County, and I think it's appropriate to remind people of that. Now you see our average farm size and so forth up there. This is the thing that we've all been waiting for, you know, this is sort of a drum roll type deal. This is the, represents the gross ag value for the last several years, and it takes a little longer to run than I wish it did, but we're going to build up here to the, you know, the big moment when we just see how we did for this year. All right, here we go. And so for 2007, the gross value of all ag products in Tulare County was 4.87496000 dollars, or 4.8 billion, that's billion with a B, dollars. Once again, I want to represent, represent, or emphasize that those don't represent gross values. That's an increase of 26%. Now, when I say that's an increase of 26%, that means compared to the previous year, 2006, which was a down year for us. So, so it's a bigger increase than, it looks like a bigger increase than it is if you follow the general trend. The general trend for the last 10 years has been about 6% growth. And I've, I, one time, just for an exercise, I plotted a trend line that included the sort of the Consumer Price Index, and it generally matches that, although we have vagaries from year to year, but, but sort of it follows a kind of 6% annual growth for the last many, many, many years. Now, one of the things I can tell you, because you might ask me, Fresno County's going to release their crop report in late May, and I like to check with the surrounding ag commissioners or those that are kind of in the ballpark of us, and because it's not unexpected for people who want to know how we'll fare. I expect that Fresno will remain number one, but I don't know that for sure. And because Fresno hasn't actually finished their compilation yet, I'm not able to tell you with certainty that, that that'll be the case. I talked to a reporter yesterday from the Fresno Bee, and I said, "You know, I expect Fresno to stay number one, but do me a favor, if they're not, make a four-inch-high headline." I don't really think that'll...
Isn't there, isn't there Ag Commissioner retiring this year?
Yes, yeah, Jerry Paredo, the Fresno Ag Commissioner, been here a long time, retires June 20...
Check those facts carefully.
June 27.
Close to a high note.
Yeah.
Anyway, we did make a healthy rebound from last year's drop. This increased 26%, and that, I went back several years, and that is probably one of the largest single-year increases, but like I say, remember that we're comparing it against a down year, so that makes it look bigger than it, than it might be otherwise. Here's the big five, the big five didn't change. Milk and milk products is number one, will be number one for the foreseeable future. I don't see anything at all that will ever change that. Now, one thing that's worth pointing out, just a few years ago, remember, I made a big deal, and it is a big deal, out of milk and milk products being the only commodity that I've seen anywhere in California that was worth more than $1 billion, that's billion with a B, dollar. Well, look at it now, I mean, it was, it's approaching $2 billion, which is remarkable. I'm going to talk a little more about milk and milk products when we talk about, you know, the winners and losers type thing here in a few, in another slide. And then another big story was oranges, which remained firmly in second place, even with the freeze. So, so that's a part of the story. Cattle and calves remain in third place, they were the year before, and that goes hand-in-hand with our dairy business. A lot of what we market for cattle and calves are dairy culled cattle that are, how can I say this, removed from service in the dairy. Grapes, been a top-five crop for a long, long time, kind of, kind of did just okay, but still, they're, they're a mainstay. If you look at the drop now to the next category down to 1.64 million for alfalfa, hay, and silage, there's, there's quite a drop there, but still, the big five are the big five, and we're the same as the previous year. This, this, we just do this for fun, this is a list of the million-dollar crops. It's not a complete list, we actually have 46 commodities in what we call the million-dollar club, that's commodities with a gross value of $1 million or more. The interesting thing to point out, and because we have blueberries on the cover, you see blueberries there, number 23, that's a new crop in Tulare County. And one of the, you know, Magna Heminis from our own University of California Cooperative Extension Service is one of the people instrumental in bringing that, that crop to this area and demonstrating that it can be grown and grown profitably. And so I think that's something to be sort of proud of, that, the whole blueberry thing kind of got started because of some work in Tulare County. The 26, I said, of those 46 crops gained in value, that's a nice thing to note. We actually had 46 commodities, I think, in the million-dollar club. I might have said that already. I sound nervous. I don't, I don't know if Mr. Ennis wants to perpetuate the tradition, but his predecessor used to always ask me how manure did, and like, you know, I don't know why that stuck, but he did, and if you see him, be sure and tell him that it's hanging in there, it's at 40, number 40 on the million-dollar crop list, and it's worth 2.63 million dollars. So if you talk to him...
That's a renewable power source.
We got him covered.
No pun intended.
Okay, these are crops with the greatest gains, or as my predecessor used to call them, the winners and losers. Look at the, look at the gain in milk products, that is spectacular. Milk and milk products alone gained 718 million dollars. And I'll just tell you, in-house, one time, we, the commissioner from Santa Cruz County called, and he was bragging his crop report was like, I don't know what it was, but let's say it was $350 million. He was bragging about that, biggest crop report they ever had. And, don't record this, but, but Leonard said, "Yeah, we had a guy miss an irrigation, and he lost that much last year." So Tulare, you know, agribusiness in Tulare County is huge, and when you see a commodity, and I'm not talking about the value of the commodity, I'm talking about an increase in 718 million dollars from the previous year, that's spectacular. It was up more than $6 a hundred weight, and that's actually better than a 50% increase over the, the previous year. And as far as we know, that's the greatest single gain for any commodity that we've seen in Tulare County ever. That's pretty spectacular. Grapes had a, a good gain, you see they're 100, up 127 million dollars. Part of that is, in 2006, there was a pretty poor year for Thompson seedless, so in 2007, they sort of returned to average. So there was about a, overall about a 15% increase in the price per ton for grapes, and that's, that's good for us, because we're not, we're not the world leader in grapes, but we produce a significant part of the table grapes that are produced in California, and so when grapes do well, that's a good thing. You see corn up there, $42 million, we've all seen some of the emphasis on corn for all sorts of uses worldwide. People are removing some commodities and planting corn, and it's used here, it's primarily, you know, animal feed and silage and so forth, but it pushes the price high everywhere. So it was over 30% increase over the previous year. Alfalfa had increases of about 40% in the price per ton. There's a huge demand for hay. Of course, anybody that's operating a dairy knows that, that feed costs are going extremely high. That's a good thing if you're selling your alfalfa, and a bad thing if you have to buy it to feed your animals. But on, bottom line is, we benefit when feed crops do well, because we raise a lot of them. And olives, now this, this is quite a story. Olives came back from a disastrous 2006. In 2006, there were virtually no olives in Tulare County. The increase, if you compare 2006 to 2007, yields were up 429% for olive. Well, why is that? That's because there weren't any in 2006. If you compare 2007 to 2005, they're up about 9%. So it's kind, the way to really imagine what happened there is olives got closer to normal than they, than they were the previous year. All right, these are the, you know, Leonard used to call these the losers, these are crops with the greatest decrease. Now, this, this is an interesting story. You see the leader of that pack with a loss of $32 million was oranges, and of course, that's not unexpected, which I showed you the freeze pictures early in the year. The story with oranges goes like this. If you lost your crop, that was a disaster for you, and there were people who lost their entire crop who didn't pick a single orange. The freeze was real for them, was devastating for them, and it's, it's taking a year now to recover. If you had marketable oranges or exportable oranges that survived the freeze, and some did, you got paid top dollar for them. The price remained strong. There's a bunch of reasons for that. The, the freeze occurred in January, most of our historic horrible freezes have occurred in December, so it's later in the season, maturity's a little better, the, the fruit was in fairly good condition and able to withstand some of that. The CAS estimate, the California Ag Statistics Service estimate, was about 25% low. What that means is there's actually physically more fruit than people imagined. Also, and I, and I want to give our inspectors some credit for this, there was a strong partnership between industry and ourselves. Packers worked really hard, and our inspectors worked really hard to make sure that frozen oranges didn't get on the market. And I applaud the industry for their restraint and their concern for marketing good products, because what happened was, people that bought oranges bought good oranges, and then they would go back and buy them again. So we didn't see the kind of loss in consumer confidence that could have devastated that market. And, and I'm proud of that. Our, our guys put in a lot of hours, and I, and God bless them. And you can't do that unless the industry also wants that same thing. So I'm very pleased to emphasize that partnership. And, and it's amazing to me that you can have that kind of freeze and still have that kind of excellent, excellent production. That really demonstrates, too, the thing that always illustrates sort of the elasticity of supply and demand, when you don't have much of something, you get a lot for it. And so you'll see that in the orange deal, and we'll see a couple of places now where you'll see the effect. The yields are way, way, way down, but the price was extremely good. Cotton acreage, cotton acreage is the lowest that we, the last records we could find go back to 1951. I used to say that Tulare County produces about 140,000 acres of cotton in a year, up and down a little bit. I used to say that as recently as about 10 years ago. We're down at 23,000 acres now. So, you know, there was a time that cotton was top-five crop, dependably, year after year, after year, after year, after year. So the cotton acreage is physically going away. A lot of that's due to just increasing competition from the rest of the world, and, and also to some degree shifting to crops that'll just bring you more money. It's, you know, economics 101. Prunes, and I want to emphasize that for the chairman, I also call them dried plums, although really, really, they're, they're primarily French prunes, which are marketed fresh, that, that are in this category.
It's just when you go to the grocery store, they're no longer prunes.
Well, I, see, I pay, I pay attention. You asked me that last year, and so I put it in there this year. I never hesitate to, to do what you guys want. One of the reasons that they, that's not funny, I really do that. One of the, one of the reasons that, that prunes and dried plums fell so low was, they had a real hot spell in 2007 during the bloom, which really shortened the pollination window, so the production in prunes and dried plums was down about 43%. Tangerines, you see them, they lost close to $6 million, that's primarily because of the freeze. There's a big shift to tangerines, mercots, seedless mandarins, that kind of thing. So the acreage is going to be going up over time, but nonetheless, they're a freeze victim, and so you see them right along with oranges dropping for last, for the 2007 year. Then wheat's down quite a bit, there was virtually no dryland wheat, and the wheat grain acreage was down by almost 50%. Part of that is because a lot of wheat that we did produce went to silage. And then this last slide is not in your crop report, but I like to throw it up here, because we do a huge number of export inspections, we call them phytosanitary inspections. And, and the reason for that is, that's really been a growth thing for the last several years, exports are kind of a bright spot. But also, you can really see the effects of the freeze. You see there, in 91, we were very low. Why is that? Well, that's because in December of 90, we had a catastrophic freeze that closed down packing houses. We didn't have oranges to export in 91, and you see it there. And then the next big, huge big dip is in 99. Why is that? Because we had a freeze in December 98. Look at the big dip we had this year in '07. Why is that? That's because start of the year, we started off by freezing what oranges were still on the tree. So you, this, this is one of the places, along with the yield in citrus, where you see most dramatically the impacts of the freeze. Now, exports, as I said, are one of the bright spots, and we shipped to quite a few countries. This is, the slide here kind of represents the leading countries, and there's a small change, and Mexico went up to number one, it was Korea the year before, and we are still exporting plenty of commodities to Korea. China takes a lot of our stuff. Primarily, Mexico takes things like grapes and tree fruit, nuts, kiwis and citrus, and Korea gets a lot of our citrus. And there, those of you that are in the citrus business know, there's quite an extensive work plan that drives Maryland crazy, trying to make sure that, that you meet all of the marketing requirements for that country. It's, the industry is really making an effort to keep Sepptoria from being shipped to Korea. It's been very successful, but it's also very, very, very labor-intensive. We shipped to something like a little more than 80 countries in, in 2007. So it's, you know, if you watch one of those shows on the Discovery Channel, and, you know, moving products around, you'll see, a lot of times you'll recognize some of the name brands on commodities, and you know darn well, they came right here from Tulare County. I'm getting down towards the end now. This is a summary by category, we do this every year, it's a part of the crop report, and I'll just quickly go through these. Fruits and nuts were worth 1.7, little over, almost 1.8 billion. They were up about 12% that, as a category. Livestock and poultry products were up 717 million, most of that's because of milk, that's a 60% increase in that category alone. Livestock and poultry up 2%. 2% change is really kind of just level growth, but it's nice to see it be positive. Field crops were up 28%, that's $101 million increase from the previous year. Let's see, where am I? Vegetables were down 8 million, or down 34%. We had very few acres of vegetable crops, that's a really volatile thing. Some years, people will get contracts to grow something for a cannery or something, so they'll plant, you know, broccoli or whatever it might be, cucumbers. And then some years, they don't have that contract, so they'll plant something else. So that's, that's not unexpected. We're not big in the vegetable business, we don't have a lot of that west-side ground like Fresno and Kings do, that, that are much more serious players in the vegetable business. Apiary, I always describe that as a very volatile commodity, almost like an alternate bearing commodity. It's not, it's, you know, it's moving colonies of bees in for pollination and so forth, but, but it seems to be real cyclical and vary a lot from year to year, so it's not surprising when it goes dramatically up or down. It was down about 15%. Industrial crops, now I want to caution you about industrial crops, this shows them up about 10%, and part of that is timber. I know Supervisor Worthley is very familiar with the timber business. We get our timber figures from the Timber Tax Division of the Franchise Tax Board. And I'll just tell you that, for the past several years, it's very hard to get that information in time to produce the crop report. We shoot for the middle part of April, we never hit it, but we get, we're pretty close now, and we're ahead of most of the surrounding counties. But, but the Timber Tax Division has just flatly said they can't get those numbers, we can't even, you know, email them or call them and get those numbers. Crop report, of course, we're talking about it this morning, and I can tell you that last Thursday afternoon, and they, they finally came out with their values, well, it's too late for us, and so all we did really is just use the 2006 number again. We footnoted it, and we'll make a correction when we do this one.
What were the actual numbers, Gary, do you know?
Excuse me?
Do you know the actuals?
The actual numbers are way down. I, I don't remember the, the figure, but I can tell you that it's dramatically down, which is probably no surprise to anybody. So for, for timber itself, there will be an enormous reduction in the value. And, you know, those of you who know that know we're down to virtually, what, one sawmill now, I think, and they're having a hard time finding product. Seed crops, we're not big in the seed crop business, but they were down $1.3 million. So the, on bottom line, we had six of these categories that were up, and three that were down. Well, that's an encouraging thing to me, and, and it's nice to have an up year to talk about. Last year, me and several of our neighbors had down years, and it's nice to recover from that. So this is the stage where, and at, at the risk of sounding like those old Bartles and James commercials, I really always want to thank your board for your support for agribusiness in Tulare County. One of the things that I like to brag about when I meet with the other ag commissioners is, I don't think there is any board, anywhere in California, that is a better, stronger supporter of agribusiness than you guys. And I appreciate that, you're strong supporters of our department. If you, if a person is going to be involved in farming, I think Tulare County is the best place to do that. do that. So, well, thanks. And then now, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to attempt to answer.
Questions from board members? Mr. Ennis?
No, I got no questions.
You leaned in first.
I've got no questions, but I'd have to say that, looking at this report, that this dairy business must be a cash cow.
In the Jim Maples tradition, thank you Supervisor Ennis. Yeah, and that's, anybody else?
I had a question. Gary, do we segregate out hothouse production or is that just lumped in again as far as vegetables and so forth?
No, we don't. For vegetables, we just call them vegetables, whether they're grown indoors or outdoors. And you get a little more value, some of the hothouse production comes in some of the miscellaneous categories and so you don't see it singled out by itself. The other thing is like even for nurseries, some of the big nurseries have enclosed, well, I call them greenhouses. We just report that under nursery ornamental, nursery vineyard and so forth. So we don't really differentiate between the method by which they're produced.
Phil, I mean Supervisor Cox.
Quick question. And remember, there is no such thing as a stupid question, okay?
But we're serving judgment.
On the alfalfa, hey, I know a lot of the dairy farmers grow their own, and that's also reported in those numbers, because I see, you know, the dairy is surrounded by their alfalfa and hay that they grow for themselves. And they also report those numbers and those go into the count?
They do. You know, even though I was being kind of funny, talking about manure early on, the truth is it has a value. And some people that want it for a soil amendment will purchase it from other people. And so when a person produces it for himself, we determine a value for that and then attribute that value back to him. So, you know, because if you have to go buy something and it costs you 10 bucks a ton, well, if you grow it yourself, that's a $10 a ton value to you. And we do the same for feed. The feed crops that you grow have a value. And if you didn't produce them yourself, you'd have to go buy them for that value. So we do attribute that value to all acres of alfalfa that's grown for hay.
Yeah, manure, probably. Thank you.
Gary, usually you tell us about the sort of total number of different varieties of crops and so forth we grow in this county. Do you remember, do you have a number for us?
You know, I can give you a crude number. Now, when I say that, I'll just tell you the truth. I mean, you hear numbers all over the place, 300 crops and 150 crops and all that kind of thing. But if you count them up, I will just tell you that it's hard for me to count higher than about 150 different commodities that we grow in Tulare County. Now, how do you get to 300?
Varieties.
You can do that, because I will say we grow naval oranges. You might say we grow O-line Washington naval oranges. We grow Thompson improved, you know. If you define it narrowly enough, you can get close to 300. But you have to define it more narrowly than I do. Now, 150 different commodities is a pretty big deal. And one of the things that helps us when we have a catastrophe, a hailstorm, a freeze, whatever, is that we have enough diversity that when one segment gets hit, the other segments can kind of, you know, may not be hit that, to that degree, and we kind of persevere. If all of our eggs were, for example, in soybeans, you know, something that devastates, soybeans would devastate the whole county. It's not the case in Tulare County. And diversity is a big deal that helps kind of, you know, it's like diversifying your investments. It kind of protects you from dramatic losses in one segment. But I like to say about 150, but I won't call anybody wrong that says 300. You can get there if you define it narrowly enough.
Well, I was disappointed to see that there's zero acres of figs anymore, something like that. I mean, that's, we've lost that crop and I think the Armenian heritage here is being lost. Someone needs to go out there and plant 20 acres of figs somewhere so we can feel good about it.
We'll look hard and see if we can find, if you put them in miscellaneous or something next year.
How many acres do you have Supervisor?
Not, thanks Gary.
Mr. Conkle, I had just one other question, and it may be, it may or may not be something you could respond to, and that's the bee situation.
Oh, yeah. You're talking about the availability of bees or colony collapse disorder?
Well, yeah, I know that it was, well, there's several issues with that.
There's a lot of issues with bees.
The crop, and then there's also the bees in somebody else's, they want to corral the bees.
I'll be glad to talk about that. We've got a couple of issues going on with bees. One is colony collapse disorder. That's a disorder where bees seem to just disappear for no reason that anybody can find. So a beekeeper, apiarist, will have several colonies of bees, they'll be doing just fine, they'll be apparently thriving, and then he'll come back one day and they're not there. Well, they're not dead at the hive or anything like that. They don't make it back to the hive. And there've been all kinds of speculation. I mean, I've seen rampant speculation and honestly, some of it kind of silly.
It was on 2020 and Dateline.
Some people attribute it to cellphone use and some people attribute it to ag chemical use and some people attribute it to different kinds of pests, mites and so forth. Some people attribute it to a virus. There you go. Nobody knows for sure what's calling, colony collapse disorder, but it is real and it's worldwide. All right? Now, so that means you have fewer hives of bees available. As all of you have seen, the, one of the leading crops that requires pollination is almonds. And there are a lot more acres of almonds every year than there were the previous year. You can see them all over the place. Well, that drives up the demand for pollination, so that means more people are looking for bees. Pollination costs this year are sky high. We will make a dramatic increase in that, next year is my prediction. But because the supply of bees is negatively impacted by colony collapse disorder and the demand for pollination is driven high by the increase in acreage of crops that require it, the price for pollination goes high. Now, superimpose on that another scenario. Remember that I said earlier, we're seeing a real shift to seedless tangerines and seedless mandarins, W. mercots and that kind of crop. People like to plant those, they're worth a lot of money right now. The consumer loves, I like them. They're easy to peel, they have no seeds, they're delicious. So you get a premium price for those things. However, if bees visit your neighbor's citrus and come onto your ranch and pollinate your seedless varieties, they stop being seedless. That drives the price very low for them. And so there's a lot of angst right now in what to do about that. And you have conflicting, competing interests. Of course, the beekeepers want to be able to sight their bee colonies in places where they've historically done that. Some beekeepers have arrangements that go back 30-plus years, come in every year, locate their bees. But unfortunately, that puts them in conflict with the people who want to try to prevent their seedless varieties from being pollinated. And there's a thing called, I love this term, it's called coexistence working groups that's wrestling with that issue right now. And I'm not optimistic that a solution will be found. I think that ultimately we'll go back to California Department of Food and Agriculture for some kind of resolution, and I don't know what that resolution will be. But feelings run pretty strong on either side of that debate.
I hope it can be solved before you let the state of California interfere.
People are trying. I mean, there's been a lot of hours put in. Jerry Prado in Fresno chairs that committee, they wanted the ag commissioner to do it because we represent kind of both sides of the coin. But it's a contentious, contentious issue.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
Thank you much. We'll see you next year.
Conkle, we want to thank you and your staff and all of you that went to the work to make this happen for us. It's always interesting and it's good to know. A few years back, I had an opportunity to speak at the Farmer of the Year luncheon. I didn't know what I could talk about, and as you know, I went back and looked at our first crop report from 1890-something, I don't know, that was loosely put together and then compared them. And so it's always interesting to me how ag has remained strong but ever-changing. Different crops, different faces, different ways of doing business.
We will expect them to come back though with a big announcement when we come on number one over Fresno County down the road.
You know, I've always tried to do everything you guys direct me to do. I'll do my best.
Do you still have some of those stickers? Remember the, the only time that I've been on the board that it happened, we all had little...
I do, I got plenty of them. Actually, the Farm Bureau, and Tricia Stever here, the executive director of the Farm Bureau is here.
She's got a whole bunch of those stickers.
But, you know, they built, they built a whole bunch of those and they had them ready when I did the crop report. And I suspect it might have been Supervisor Worthley goes, hey, how did they know to make those things? And I told him, you know, when you do the Super Bowl, the losing team made hats too. Anyway, thank you very much for your support. This is a great place to be in agribusiness.
That's very true. Thank you. And thank you for recognizing Tricia from the Farm Bureau. Thanks for being here with us this morning. Okay, gentlemen, we have lots of work to do. Before I call it, whatever's next, Mr. Guzman, how long will your presentation be?
About 10 minutes.
I think I'd like to take your presentation now. We're going to go to item 26.
Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Russo.
Since we're on presentations, we're calling you up Al.
Okay, we started four years ago, working on alliance with other government entities, nonprofit organizations to combine our costs that we use with Office Depot. And what we have is, before that, it was like everyone had to be on their own. You had to make at least $500,000 in order to get a rebate back from Office Depot. When we did an alliance, Office Depot allowed us to put everybody's pools together and there we would get our percentage rebates. It's gone from 2% to 6% now. And what has happened is we have, we've also helped entities that were not able to reach that plateau to even get a, the 2% rebate are now part of the alliance and they do get the rebate. And so this time, I'd like to turn it over to our district manager for Office Depot, Scott Jacobs.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Al made the comment it'd be a five to 10-minute presentation. I have a 10:30 conference call I'd like to get out of, but maybe I'll extend it a little bit.
Okay, we may have to interrupt your presentation and preempt you as some...
No, I'm sure we'll be done, we'll be done quicker than that. As Al mentioned, you folks participate on the U.S. Communities Program, which is a natural, national purchasing forum for local and state governments, school districts K-12, higher education and nonprofits nationwide. Today, 31,000 agencies utilize the contract with purchases of over $1 billion. The interesting fact on that, the Office Depot portion of that equates to over $600 million nationwide. So we represent 60% of the volume that U.S. Communities does every year. Last year, we presented a check to the alliance for $319,848. And I'm pleased to announce that this year's check has increased over 17% from last year to a total of $376,852. So a job well done by the different agencies that are participating. 33 agencies participate countywide. 15 of them are here today to receive their checks. And the other 18, I don't know what we're going to do, Al. Do we just deposit them back in the county funds? I think that's tradition from last year.
Sounds good to me.
Not only Al, I'd like to thank Al for being the lead person on the program, but also Rita and her staff for cutting the checks so quickly. I know I gave Al the check probably about three weeks ago and all of a sudden he disappeared. I had no idea where he was going and I think he was going to Rita's office real quick, you know, to get the checks cut. So I wanted to introduce a couple of folks that, actually three individuals that represent Office Depot locally. Dion Murch, who is an account manager here locally, if you'll come up. And she is actually the account manager for Tulare County plus other agencies. Mark Williamson, who represents the K-12 market in the valley. And also Jose Castro, I see back there, who is an account manager who covers the South Valley. And at this time, what I'd like to do is have the 15 agencies that are getting checks to just come forward so we can sort of expedite the process. But first of all, I thought, Connie, would you like to come down and get the county check?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. This was, this was another mystery this morning. I was going through the checks and I couldn't find Tulare County's checks. And I asked Al about it and he had it safely locked in his desk drawer. So I wrestled that away from him. But I have a check for Tulare County for $88,630.46. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Do I speak this back to Al?
Yeah, that's what he said. He goes, I don't know why you're getting it, she's just going to have to give it back to me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And then I'm just going to go down in order, not necessarily in dollar figures, but we have a check for Abel Industries for $2,025.54.
Must be present to win.
Yeah, must be present to win. Redraw, right? I think Visalia Unified is here, correct Mark? And we have a check, and I would like to see the county in Visalia Unified get over $100,000 next year. Actually, Visalia Unified has a check for $91,702.61.
Wow.
City of Woodlake, which I believe Jose has the check for, receives $964.73. Well, we'll get it. Yeah, we'll get it. Try another one that Al has in his desk drawer. Family Builders Foster Care, $1,495.66. Tulare City Schools, $14,229.63. Housing Authority of Tulare County, $2,859.37. City of Porterville, $4,595.3.
Want that one Mike?
Yeah, I'll take that one.
City of Tulare, $4,563.83.
Robert's here.
City of Visalia, $13,832.87. And then the last check that we have for this morning, Tulare County Department of And we'd like to thank again the county's lead in this particular program. It's a pleasure for Office Depot to participate with. Al, I was thinking this morning, Al, you and I go back 27 years, so it's been a long partnership. So thank you again.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
It looks like you've, we've made a lot of people happy this morning, and we would love for them to stay with us, but I'm sure they're going to take their check straight to the bank. But thanks to all the agencies that are represented here and that participate in the program, certainly to you, Mr. Guzman, Super Al, as we like to call you, we appreciate this work on behalf of everyone that's here. Any other board members like to comment? No, they're just waiting for their checks. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Phil, I would move to approve the, accept the presentation.
Oh, all right. Are we, do we need to, if we need to do that? I guess we just did. We're voting anyway. Okay, we approved it unanimously. Okay, we have other folks waiting, I think we can do consent quickly. Okay?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Eight through 25.
Cast your votes please. Okay, consent passes unanimously. Free up those that need to leave. And now move to our 9:30 timed items. Item number two, public hearing, request from Resource Management Agency for consideration of a tentative subdivision map. Morning, Mrs. Kate.
Morning. Chairman Conway and members of the board. I'm Beverly Cates, the chief planner for Resource Management Agency Project Review Division. The project planner on this was, is Charlotte Bruselis, and she's attending an APA national conference in Las Vegas this week at her own expense. Add that.
She didn't get a check this morning, right?
No, she didn't get a check. Okay, this is a public hearing regarding a subdivision, tract 797. This is to divide 15.8 acres into 36 lots in the RA 12.5 rural residential, 12,500 square foot minimum zone. The site is located on the southwest corner of Avenue 396 and Road 34, southwest of Dinuba and east of Kingsburg. Shows the zoning of the site, RA 12.5, and there is other RA 12.5 in the vicinity. We recently approved this subdivision. And there was also a subdivision north of the highway in this area. And then to the east is the agricultural zones. This is an aerial photo showing the vicinity. There are residences built in the area surrounding the golf course. Here's the Kings River. And then there's still agricultural crops. The site is currently vacant. This, north is to your right here. This is the redesigned subdivision. When it... When it first went to Planning Commission, there were some changes in the lots that, these lots, this went through and the lots didn't have the pie shape. And that was one of the requests of the neighbors to redesign this, to have all the cul-de-sacs have pie shapes so that they have just backyards adjacent to the, the perimeter of the site. They also requested more visibility and the subdivider has redesigned this wall to have a fifty-foot setback and, and more visibility in this corner. Also, with the subdivision, they will be required to improve the frontage, building out this road to a half road, half width, so that would also increase the visibility by the fact that there would be more road pavement along that site. This did go to Planning Commission. There were several hearings at the Planning Commission and there was some opposition. The Planning Commission felt that all the concerns were addressed. This is, has been designated and zoned for this density of development since nineteen eighty-one, so twenty-seven years. It has been sitting vacant, but during the recent housing boom, there were some other subdivisions in this area under that Kings River Plan that were approved and have started construction. Also included was a request for a setback zone variance and the Planning Commission approved that. That didn't have to come onto the board. But since this is outside of any urban area boundary, the final decision is at the board's Mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. There are twenty-three recommended conditions. The mitigation measure was concerning protection of burying owls. They weren't actually found on the site, but it is in the area, so that's one of the areas that we checked. This shows the current site. This is looking south at the, that northeast corner where the roads intersect. Showing the road, fairly narrow, but with the widening as required for improvements that would improve that, so. Southern boundary. That concludes my report. Okay, gentlemen, any questions for Mrs. Cates?
Real quick, did I read that this is going to have a block wall? So it's a gate, like a gated subdivision?
Yes.
Block wall all the way around? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure I just need to make a disclosure that I did meet with one of the opponents to the project about a month ago and then last party took a tour of the, of the site with a couple of the proponents of the project. Just want to make that disclosure and nothing was reported to me that I haven't reviewed the report that that's any different than the information I have.
Thank you supervisor. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to, speak to the board about this matter now would be the time.
Good morning. My name is Steve Brandt. I'm a certified planner with Quadnoff Consulting, fifty-one ten West Cypress here in Visalia. Here today representing Anthony Belakian and Scott Raven, who are the property owners of the site. When Mr. Belakian and Mr. Raven purchased this property, they specifically chose a property that was, that was already zoned for residential development. They understood that this site was in the Kings River Plan and had been designated for residential development for, as Ms. Cates said, you know, at least twenty, twenty-one And as you know, the Kings River Plan is a, is a part of the county general plan and has the same weight as the Rural Valley Lands Plan and, and the Foothill Growth Management Plan and other parts of the plan. This project meets the county standards and plans and designations. It's less dense than what would be allowed by the plan. It has larger lots than what would be allowed by the plan. The lots have been sized to meet the sizing requirements for septic tank leach field systems. Those preliminary designs have been reviewed by the Environmental Health Department and they have given us conditions to meet in the construction of those systems. One is that they'd be engineered systems. Two, that there be five feet of a different type of soil put underneath the systems because this area has very sandy soil. It drains quickly. And so to slow the percolation rate underneath the leach fields, there's going to be five feet of soil put underneath it to meet the standard that the Environmental Health Department wants to, wants to achieve. This project has been reviewed, as Ms. Cates said, by Planning, Public Works, Environmental Health, Fire, and they have all given, put place conditions on the site that the Planning Commission has reviewed and approved and, and we have accepted. We've prepared water quality tests, geohydra reports, and no red flags have come up from those reports. During the, or between the two Planning Commission meetings, the property owners met with the neighbors at the Kings River Clubhouse. We had a community meeting to go over the project. There were a number of modifications that were made based on the, the comments. And those are, that's why Ms. Cates said the, the map that you saw is, is the final version that we're proposing. So in summary, just want to say that we have respected the general plan by picking a site that's currently zoned. We've prepared the appropriate background tests and submitted those to county staff for their review. The county staff designated an outside consultant to prepare the sequa document and that mitigated negative declarations before you for certification today. We've listened to the neighbors' concerns and tried to address them and make changes where we could to, to make the site the best site that it can be. We're asking for you to make the findings that your staff has recommended and, and approve the project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Mr. Brandt? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Good morning. Rick Schul, three-two-nine-nine Avenue three ninety-six. I'm the neighboring property owner due west of this project. Have been at all of the Planning Commission meetings, have been at the meetings with the developers. We have had, we've made some progress in design changes and I want to commend the developers for that and appreciate that. Some issues that are outstanding, that I would just like addressed at this level and the same thing I addressed at the Planning Commission level, as a neighboring homeowner, are three basic items, the first being traffic. Mrs. Cates, can you get that, your road slide back up for me? Is that possible? The, the photo of the streets, the actual.
Act one.
One forward. One more. That's it. If you look at the, this is Avenue three ninety-six, three ninety-six terminates into Road thirty-three. The developers are proposing that they do widen and develop both three ninety-six and Road thirty-four to compensate for additional traffic flows. What's not being taken in consideration, and there was no traffic study done on the project, which is still a surprise to me as a neighbor and as a, as a developer as well, is how is the traffic going to be mitigated outside of where the developers are proposing their improvements on these narrow country roads? Currently, my driveway comes out of our private road onto the intersection of three ninety-six and thirty-three. Nobody's talked about traffic counts or how many more trips in and out of the subdivision there will be on any given day. And if you look to Road thirty-three and thirty-four, the traffic, the only inquiry on traffic was done with Caltrans on State Highway two oh one, also known as Avenue four hundred into Tulare County, and they said there would be no significant increase or decrease. Looking at the right-hand shoulder in this photo, that's the way the road looks all the way between State Highway two oh one and then all the way down to Avenue three eighty-four. It's a narrow country road. It's adequate for what it carries currently, but with the approval of this board of three new subdivisions, I don't think anybody's looked at what the traffic impact of these small country roads is going to be on an already poorly maintained shoulder and width, Road thirty-three, three ninety-six, and then of course thirty-four, which will take people all the way back to three eighty-four. If you pull an aerial, Mrs. Cates, sorry, can I do this again? Can we go back to the area of the whole area where the subdivisions were? Beautiful. If you go to three ninety-three, and I don't have a pointer, that carries the traffic back into Fairway Drive and the subdivision that was just approved. That intersection has almost been destroyed by current construction equipment and additional traffic. And again, the county's going to have to take a look at how these intersections are going to be maintained. I don't know if anybody took a look at additional traffic counts, what's going to happen to these small intersections. But again, if you look at the distance from three ninety-six to three ninety-three, and then if I had a larger aerial to show all the way down to three eighty-four, there's quite a bit of county roadways, again, designed for county traffic, not designed to carry additional traffic of in and out, traffic of thirty-two to thirty-four lots, daily trips per, per day. So that, I do think the board of supervisors, you need to be aware of that. The Planning Commission did not request a, a traffic study. They said that Caltrans signing off on again State Highway two oh one, which is a half mile away, was adequate to carry the, the additional trips in and out. The second issue that Mr. Brandt touched on is the issue of septic. My property is due west. The natural, the natural Kings River flow, I'd be between, I'm going to be between thirty-two new septic systems and the natural push of the Kings River. As a homeowner, that concerns me. I'm on a private well. I sit on one point eight three acres. With the density that's going in, Mr. Brandt touched on it, these are going to have to be engineered septics. They're going to have to import soil to carry the septic load. And that is just such a radical red flag to me. I've been selling property in and out of Tulare County for the last twenty years and have not had to bring imported soil into a site for septic in my limited experience ever. And I think the board needs to look at that. I know in the report it says that they're going to be engineered systems, but as a neighboring homeowner, I am concerned for my water quality based on thirty-two leach fields that have to be substantiated by imported soil. Again, I'm not disputing the zoning. I'm not disputing the design, all of which are, are good, but I want to be on record with this board that stating I have a concern of those leach systems in and around my home. The last item is water and water quality, and I'm speaking on behalf of Fred Swanson. Fred is the neighboring landowner due east of the project. Fred owns all the agricultural property on that parcel. And Blake Carlson, who also was unable to attend today's meeting. And then I've got Lex Swanson in the audience who lives on the Swanson property. A concern is here is we're in an agricultural area. Again, we, we are aware of zoning. We are aware that it's an allowed use. The neighbors, specifically the farm community, wants to be on record and wants the county supervisors to take a look at what the overdraft could be for existing agricultural wells in the area. They are also concerned, as the homeowners are, with this many septic and leach fields going in, what will that do to the quality of water that they are providing for their currently growing? Most of those are peach, nectarine, and plum crops, deciduous trees. There is a concern that with the amount of drafting that the thirty-two homes would take, what will that do to existing wells for agricultural use? Mr. Swanson had a, a detailed presentation, I think Mrs. Conway was at that meeting, that Fred showed all the existing water wells in the area that are ag-related and then those that are residential related. And it was a detailed report. I don't know if you, if supervisors have access to that Planning Commission report, but it would bear worth looking at prior to any approvals of the, of the existing plan and how they're going to distribute water in the area. Lex, that's all I have. Is there anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lex Swanson. I live at three-nine-five-six-nine, Road thirty-six. If you can bring up the, yeah, to, to the due west there, you see the agricultural property. I live in the one and a half acres there. And I'd just like to go on record too that I agree that I'm concerned about with thirty-six individual septic tanks, whether, yeah, it's been engineered, but they have to import the dirt, which tells me you have existing soil that leaches quite rapidly. And then in certain flood years, the, the level of the river has come up to where, you know, there's even water sometimes in the golf course, which tells me, you know, that it can flow from there, you know, sideways to, and we're just concerned about water quality mostly. And I'd like to speak for Jeff Bordeleusi, who couldn't attend today, who farms the property around my house, and Blake Carlson farms adjacent. They had some concerns of just that many more people living there, whether, you know, they're going to be, when they want to spray or do other farming agricultural activities, you know, there's that more many people to potentially complain or say, you know, you know, it's, they need to farm that land, but you get people that think it's more like the city, you know, and they just, makes it harder for them to do their agricultural practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Morning.
Morning, members of the board. My name is Gary Winter. I'm with the Law Firm of Powell and Poole. I represent Fred and Cheryl Swanson. And you've heard a little bit about Fred and Cheryl today. They are the neighboring and adjacent property owners to the east of the site. Fred's asked me to come and, and speak to you today a little bit about your mitigated NIGDAC here. First of all, it, it appears to me that some potentially significant effects have been identified. There've been conditions put on that. This led to the import of soil and the adjustment of percolation rates for leach lines and septic issues. I think it's important to recognize that you're not certifying an EIR today. You are adopting a mitigated NIGDAC. In other words, you are not going to do environmental review. You've done an initial study and you've decided that a full environmental review is not required. That's why Mr. Schul does not have a traffic study. Additionally, that's why there hasn't been a full study done on the impacts of leach lines and sewage and these kind of things. So for you, I, I just want to relay that you are saying by adopting this project, if you approve it, that there's no substantial evidence on the whole record that shows that there may be a significant impact on the environment. Okay? I think that's not the case. I think that my client has appeared at the Planning Commission meeting. He's given substantial evidence in the form of water studies, nitrate levels. I think you can also look at the surrounding area, the community of Delf, where they've had to put in a sewage system. Leach lines were no longer acceptable. I think you can look at the aerial and see how close this project is to the river. And knowing that the groundwater flows from the northeast to the southwest, these leach lines and the already identified fast percolation levels are going to be leaching and flowing right past Mr. Schul's property and into the river. If that's not a significant impact, I'm not sure what is. So I'd like to also, I'd like to also add that you need to consider cumulative impacts. We can't look at tract seven ninety-seven in isolation. You need to consider the fact that you recently approved twenty-five- You need to consider the fact that you recently approved twenty-five units to the north, or to the, to the north. There are some projects pending to the south. And in total, for the Kings River Plan area, after build-out, you're going to have some two-hundred homes here. That needs to be looked at in totality. I don't think that staff has done that in this case. Again, if it can be fairly argued on the basis of substantial evidence here, and again, your standard is really light. I think that my client has fairly argued, he has provided substantial evidence. There are studies that have been given to the Planning Commission. You need to take that very seriously if you adopt this mitigated NEGDEC. I think you should seriously consider full environmental review in this case. Finally, I want to address Mr. Brant's comment that no red flags have been identified. That's because we haven't done environmental review. So my client doesn't wish to pick on zoning or the project layout, but we do need to talk about water quality. It's a big issue today. It's different today than what it was ten years ago, twenty years ago. If you look at your surrounding counties, your surrounding boards, they are taking water quality to a new level. And that means that to put a project of this scale through on a mitigated NEGDEC is probably risky for you as a county. I think you need to take a good look at that, ask your county council, and say, have we done everything we need to do here to comply with SEQA? Are we doing the right thing by adopting a mitigated NEGDEC? Okay? Thank you for the opportunity to see. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Madam Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have any evidence that these manufactured, or these engineered systems will not be adequate to handle the issue of porosity with the soil?
And I think that the evidence that my client has supplied are water studies showing nitrate levels. That's the evidence we would point to. I don't have to have evidence controverting the initial study. All I have to do is fairly argue that there are, there is substantial evidence on the record. Alternative conclusions could be reached at this point. We don't know, because we haven't done full environmental review.
I take that as a no. You don't have any information regarding the, whether or not these systems will be adequate?
I have supplied, my client has supplied to the Planning Commission, water studies. There's been oral presentation, and so I don't need to address that concern at this point.
Very good. Then the other question I have is, do you have, have you seen the studies of the water that were taken on this site, the nitrate levels?
Yes.
And the studies that you're referring to do not include this site, is that correct?
That's right.
I have enough of the questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Winter.
Madam Chairman, I wonder if we might ask our staff to, because there was more information in the report referring to traffic than was, I heard from the public comments that were made. I wonder if that might be addressed this time, because I understand that the San Joaquin Valley Air Protection Control District was contacted about this, and we have issues in terms of how much development requires threshold levels and that sort of thing.
As long as it's appropriate during this part of the...
Right. Well, it's part of the staff. It's in the report, it's just it wasn't part of the oral report given by staff.
You're referring to the initial study at environmental assessment concerning traffic?
There's a report, I believe, from our RMA department, I believe, regarding traffic. There's the Caltrans report, and I believe there's something to do with the air district as well. Has to do with the size of the project.
We have received letters from Caltrans indicating there would be no impact, and we have a letter from the Forest Management Agency Engineering Branch indicating that the divider, subdividers proposing private roads within the subdivision and the road improvements requiring construction of Class One and Two County Road Standards on Road thirty-four and Avenue three-ninety-six. Have the studies in the back for the preliminary Juhada Report prepared by a registered civil engineer, Javier Sanchez. Have an archaeological study was prepared and a biological report. We're all prepared for this project.
I believe there's also a statement from our RMA department, Road Department, concerning the level of use of the road, that it's not anticipated that the level will change from being the highest in terms of its travel capacity.
Level of service A, and that the generation of an estimated three-hundred-sixty trips per day would not reduce the level of service as free-flowing with no congestion.
Thank you.
One quick question, while, if I may.
Yes.
Where, Road thirty-three, that goes to the north, where does that go to?
Goes up to the state highway.
It ends at four-hundred. Is there an on-ramp there, or is it...
No, it's, it's an intersection. This one.
Well, I can, no more see that than I...
Grade left.
Put on the other maps.
Excellent.
So it goes into a T-intersection.
It's not a freeway, it's a, just a state highway through there.
Okay.
Okay? Is that resolved? Questions? Hey, we're still in the public hearing mode. Anyone else wishing to address the board? One more time?
Yes.
Is this your one-minute rebuttal?
This rebuttal, no, I'm not rebuttal. I appreciate Mr. Worthley's passion for the project, but apparently Mr. Cox hasn't even visited the site. Wondering if there's an on-ramp from a country road to another country road, and three-hundred-and-sixty trips are estimated from the staff? Is that the number I heard?
Yes.
An additional three-hundred-and-sixty trips per day. Put that on, if we go back to, I'll hit the button, if you go back to that little Road thirty-four and Road thirty-three, you tell me if those roads can handle three-hundred-and-sixty additional trips per day, and if we don't have to have some sort of mitigation for those trips. I would encourage Mr. Cox specifically to take a trip to the site and look at these existing roads and intersections. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, this screams impact fees to me. The county's lack of impact fees, which would help mitigate some of these issues, is what we're trying to accomplish as a board, I think.
Maybe it's addressed in the conditions. I'm, I'm not sure that the rest is completely what you're talking about. But before we get to that discussion, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay?
Thank you for the chance. I'll be brief. Just in response to the issues regarding SEQA, you know, just because we didn't prepare an EIR does not mean we're not following SEQA. You know, SEQA requires the initial study, requires the background reports that we've prepared, and then the determination is made as to what type of document to prepare. In this case, your staff, in conjunction with an outside consultant, determined that mitigated negative degradation was the appropriate document to prepare to meet the requirements of SEQA. Also, just some, some technical background about the fill import. The, the, there were nine percolation tests done on the site. The average percolation rate was used to determine the size of the leach fields, and then we made sure that we had enough site on each parcel to build those leach fields twice, in case the first one fails at some point in the distant future. Then, the reason for the extra fill is because there were variants in the percolation rates. Some were much slower, some were much faster. So the soil is to, is to even out those rates, and the Environmental Health Department said, we want you to import soil that has a percolation rate that is slower than the average that you have designed this for. So we're going beyond what would normally be required by someone else who just, you know, put in a septic tank in their house because of the variance in the percolations rate. So the, I don't want you to think that the import soil means that there was something wrong. It means that we're going the extra mile to do more than what is required.
Thank you. Do you have a question, supervisor?
I don't have, I do not have a direct question, but by looking at the zoning in the surrounding areas, I think a good point's been made, that you have to look at the cumulative effect of the zoning versus each individual parcel. So I have some questions there. If we're just looking at an individual subdivision and not really looking at the cumulative effects of multiple subdivisions.
Okay. Well, just want to make sure that no one else has any testimony for the board.
I believe I have something to address that concern. The Kings River Plan, in the adoption of that plan, had an environmental impact report that looked at cumulative impacts. So, I mean, that, that plan and the adoption of this area for designation of residential did look at those cumulative impacts.
So you've already, there's already an EIR?
Yes, for the plan.
Madam Chairman, I might ask a question, follow-up question. This will build out the area, is that correct? Is there any other property left that would be developed that hasn't already been approved for, for development?
There has been several lot, parcel maps in the area. I'm trying to, let's see, when you, you look at this area, there's probably... Lot right in here, there might be some more on the north side of the highway. This is pretty much everything in that, that location.
Okay. All right, then I will, okay. Your one, your one-minute...
I, yeah, sorry for the rebuttal. I, I do need to clarify something. The Kings River specific plan has an EIR. That doesn't mean that this project has an EIR. What you're going to adopt is a mitigated NEGDEC.
Okay.
So this project has not had environmental review. Thanks.
I understand that. Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, then I'll close the public hearing testimony, bring it back to the board for discussion.
Madam Chairman, we have this on down for a closed session. I'd like to consult with our council before we continue on.
Very well. Before I could even ask it, you were right there, supervisor. We'll adjourn to closed session and quick discussion, and we'll be back.
Let you scoot in.
It's not, this is by the pitcher.
By the leader.
If that was beer, we'd have you in rehab. Okay. Board will come back in the session and continue our discussion.
Madam Chairman, after consultation with our council, I would like to continue this matter. Would we decide three weeks?
Three weeks would give us a little bit more time to get the information for you.
So that we might review the environmental impact report, the study that was done in the project area, and further information concerning traffic and nitrate concerns. And I would like to clarify one comment that was made here this morning. My passion is not for this project. My passion is for private property rights, the same rights that allowed Mr. Shul to build his home and the other people who enjoy their homes where they have them. I'm a strong proponent of people being able to use their property, and I, it, that is my passion, and my passion is not for this project. I have no interest in this project personally. I gain nothing by it personally. But I do strongly believe in the rights of private property as protected by our Constitution.
Second motion.
You have a motion, a second, further discussion or comments?
The only other comment is, I was ready to vote today, but I will support the extension.
I know where you're coming from, supervisor. Cast your votes, please. Okay.
And to clarify, Madam Chair, a public comment will be reopened on that day.
Okay.
Won't be re-nounced without meaning? This stands as your notice?
No.
So it'll be continued, three weeks to nine-thirty. What is that date? What's the date? That's May twentieth.
Moving right along, if I can say that. We will move to item number three, public hearing, request from the library to consider following proposed adjustments to the library fee schedule. Morning, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning, Board, CAO, Council. I am here to ask for six changes to the Tulare County Library Fee Schedule. One is to approve a library fee of three dollars for conducting out-of-San Joaquin Valley Library System obituary research requests. We get quite a few requests from folks all over the United States for this. It takes quite a bit of time, and we're just trying to recover a small fee to help pay for the postage and some of staff time. The second is to eliminate the library fee hold of fifty cents per hold. This is something that the board gave us permission to experiment with, and we've done it for quite a while, and what we found is that our holds are actually doubling. And they're doubling throughout the Tulare County Library System, so that means that a lot of people in all of the branches are taking advantage of the free hold system, and it's working quite well. Part of that, though, is we anticipate that a lot of people would place holds on books and then never come to pick them up, which means they were just doing it willy-nilly or just out of a whim, and that causes a lot of work. So what we're asking is to charge twenty-five cents for each hold that's not picked up. So when we pull it off the shelf because no one came in in their ten days, we go ahead and put a fee in on their library record for each book that they did not pick up. We're also asking to approve the elimination of the talking rental book fee, a book fee rental, of a dollar. That was a fee that was put on many, many years ago when talking books were outrageously expensive and we hadn't started a collection yet. We're the only ones in the San Joaquin Valley Library System who are not charging a dollar, and we feel that we should do what the rest of the libraries are doing and eliminate that fee. We're asking that you eliminate the VHS rental fee. VHSs are not going to be around much longer in the library. We hardly check out any of them anymore, so they're, they're going by the wayside.
So it should cost more because they're classics.
Well, we'll be happy to check out as many as you like for you, Chairman Conway.
Just promised I'd bring them back.
If they don't mess up your machine because they've been used so many times. And we'd like...
Well, that I had time to watch them.
You can watch it in closed session while you're waiting for witnesses. We're also asked to approve an increase in the out-of-San Joaquin Valley Library System interlibrary loan fee from two dollars to two dollars and fifty cents. That's basically to cover the increase in our average mail costs for books that go to outside of the San Joaquin Valley Library System. And those are my requests. If you have any questions, or if you want more detail, I'd be happy to provide it.
Questions?
I concur with the idea of establishing a fee for people asking us to do something and then not following through on their own. I just, I noticed that the recovery is eight percent, and I'm wondering if that's going to be sufficient. It seemed to me we could charge more, because then the, it's nowhere close to our actual cost, and I wonder what deterrent it suffers if it's twenty-five cents a book, if that would in any way deter anybody from doing it. And that's the whole point of this, is from a deterrent standpoint.
And it may not, supervisor. We might want to go to what the original fee was, which is fifty cents per item. That would...
Would that be a problem, counsel, if we were to raise that to fifty cents based upon our, the notice that was done today, or...
Actually, I don't think I have a copy of the notice of hearing. Actually, I don't think I have a copy of the notice of hearing and was the amount placed in the notice?
No, I don't. Mike, do you know, was the amount placed in the notice that was published in the newspaper? No.
It has been on your record though. It would probably be better to go ahead and continue it for two weeks. I hate to have them renotice it.
I don't know how the rest of you feel, I just.
I concur. I think 25 cents isn't a big enough deterrent.
I'd charge them a buck, but that's me.
And you're still at less than 50% of the actual cost.
Well, the notice was just to then increase that fee or charge that fee.
That's a new fee apparently, or it was a reduction of 50 cents.
That's a new, that's actually a new fee. Actually a new fee.
We charged the fee of 50 cents.
No, the notice was just to set the hearing, it does not publish any of the, it does talk about generate a new fee of paying for that, it doesn't give the amount.
Okay, I think you're fine.
Go ahead and do it.
Okay, well, it's a public hearing though.
And I realize that this is, has a negative impact on the library budget as a whole, but I really think that this will help serve the equalized services as much as possible in the, throughout the system and during bad economic times, libraries get busier. So, now is the time not for us to charge more fees, but now is the time for us to allow the people who need to use this, give them the opportunity to do it to full advantage.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. It is a public hearing, so I'll open it now. Anyone wishing to speak before the board, now's the time. Okay, seeing and hearing none, even though Henry stood up. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for your motion.
Madam Chairman, I, again, I think the idea of this fee that I'm talking about is not one that's charged against somebody if they follow through with what they've requested to do. And so, we're not charging a fee for utilization of our library, we're charging a fee for somebody who would cause our library to extend services and then not follow up and pick up something. I'm inclined to go along with you, you mentioned a dollar and I think a dollar, I mean, that's not a lot of money in today's economy and a dollar still would only recover less than 50% of the actual cost of the county. And I think it might act as a greater deterrent then for people, if you're going to have a hold, pick up your books. If you're not going to have a hold, there will be, there will be a cost involved and it's not recovering 100% of our cost, so.
Just looking for a little follow-through.
I would second that.
So, I would move to approve the proposed fee changes with the modification of the fee for not picking up a hold, then raise that to $1.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes please. Don't laugh at me Phil. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you Board.
Okay. Public hearing number four, request from the Assessor Clerk Recorder. Thank you for your patience and good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board Members.
It's just fun to hang around in our world, isn't it?
It is.
Makes you feel better about going back to your shop.
I love this. This morning, I'm bringing to the board a, an issue that passes last year. It was AB 1168 by Jones, it was chaptered in the year 2007. And as we know, there's an awful lot of fraud identity that goes on throughout the state of California and the United States. We get involved with it quite a bit in the Clerk Recorder's office and, you know, the DA has come to the rescue of many people with some fraud investigation money that has been created over the years. What we have now before us is there are several filings that are done in the Clerk Recorder's office that have social security numbers on them. Those range from county documents and public entity documents, child support documents, county tax liens, state tax liens, child support issues which I mentioned, judgment on court issues, death certificates, and many, many federal and state tax liens and releases. And what we're trying to do with this AB 1168 bill is to create a situation whereby we take our official records and truncate the social security numbers so that the only social security numbers that will show up on the public record screens and on the public records are the last four digits of their social security numbers. In order to do this, obviously it takes time and money to be able to set a truncation program in process and we are requesting that the Board of Supervisors authorize us a $1 additional recording fee so that we can implement this social security truncation number. Also, just something that goes along with this is that this fee is specifically set up to handle the truncation program. Yet there is a requirement that the county auditor controller, treasure tax collector, audit this account in the year 2012 to 13 and then again, once in, I think, the year 2017 to determine whether or not this program should maintain in force or it should be terminated. But as we know, the more safety and security measures that we can put into place for our constituents, the better we are and I'm requesting that the Board authorize this $1 fee and if authorized, we will start charging the $1 additional recording fee as of June 1, which is the requirement date. If we do not have this in place by June 1, then we'll be unable to go back and recapture any fees and the county would be liable for paying for the truncation program because it is operating right now and it is effective right now.
Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Hardcastle, what is the anticipated revenue that the county would expect based upon our record of recording?
It would be based upon the number of deeds that are actually being recorded and for last year, we had 111,000.
What does it cost to actually create the system?
We don't know. There are several vendors that are, we're looking at that they go from a physical review of the documents and truncation of the first five letters to a software application that would, could read, could read the actual document. And so, we would take an official record and convert that to a public record. It requires us to maintain two databases and that's where the cost comes into play. And for 2007 though, we had 111,604 recordings. I would anticipate that, I don't know whether that would even be enough or not, but it certainly would be the start and this will be an ongoing program. Effective January 1 of '08, this year, people or organizations or legal entities who give us this data are supposed to automatically truncate the new stuff. Now, whether they do or not, we have to accept it and if they haven't truncated it, we do need to truncate that. So, it also goes back to the fact that we have to convert and truncate records back to 1980. We now have those in digital format, but they haven't been truncated yet. So, it's a lot, it's a big process, but it's, you know, it's obviously for the public good and we believe that this is a, it's a lot of work to do it, but it's a very important issue for property owners and our constituents here in the county.
My only, I mean, I will support the request, but my only personal concern I have is that as an attorney, does a fair amount of recording of documents, the documents I record don't have social securities on them anyplace. So, basically, we're taking documents, probably the vast majority of the ones you record don't have social securities numbers on them at all and we're basically using that to help fund a program for those that are affected by this. And in my mind, it's, so it's not the user paying for the cost totally. We've got people who have nothing to do with this system and are not impacting in any way, but they're being used as a way to pay for some of their insurance.
I understand. And I mean, and that's, it's just, it's a good way to do it because it's a commonality. You know, a couple of years ago, we went forward with a $2 recording for those documents that don't require transfer tax and set up a DA fraud investigation unit with that. So, I know it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, but it's certainly an easy way to handle it and certainly I would rather pay the fee and know that anything with my social security numbers on it that are currently an official record and do become a public record are in fact truncated so that my social security number doesn't show up.
Well, I think it makes sense, it's just that it's a way of raising taxes without calling it a tax and that's what it amounts to.
I know. Well, Johnson, Jones didn't check with us, you know, they moved forward with their, with their stuff in Sacramento, so.
Thanks.
I agree with you those two.
Worthly for Governor. Okay, any other questions? No, all right then. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify before the board on this matter, now would be the time. Okay, and Henry's not even moving this time, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
I'm sure I most do approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, cast your votes please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hardcastle. Alrighty then, geez up already. Public hearing number five, request from the treasure tax collector. At all, as I like to say about your title, consider changes to fee schedule. Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Conway, Supervisors, Mr. Rousseau and Ms. Roberts. I have the notice of the public hearing here for counsel. I'm Rita Woodard, Tulare County Auditor Controller, Treasure Tax Collector. My work address is 221 South Mooney Boulevard, Visaya, California. The public hearing is to consider changes to the fee schedule for the Tulare County Tax Collector's Office and we have reviewed 12 of the tax collector fees and recommended changes as listed in your packet. These cost recovery items were calculated using generally accepted accounting standard methods and per our research, many of these fees have not changed for eight or more years. Actually, one was changed in 2002. So, there are some that have changed quite a bit, but some of them are not changing very much as we are using automation and efficiencies to keep the fees as low as possible and still recover actual costs. However, some of these, such as the return check fee, are very labor intensive due to the old legacy programs and systems that we have in place still in our office. So, that's why the increase in the cost. Excuse me. I'd like to point out that the personal research assistance fee is not charged to the individual taxpayer that wants a copy of their parcel. It's only charged to businesses and for large research projects that would take a lot of time on a lot of parcels. The information is made available for them if they wish to do the research themselves so that they don't have to be charged for it, even on businesses. Okay. And we also wanted to let you know that we're excited about some of the new processes and procedures we're working on to put this information on CDs instead of on microfiche and thus have the information in a more user-friendly media and easier to copy and provide to the requesters so that they can do the research themselves, not us. Additionally, we're working to have five years of information online available free to them instead of just one year for the web access for them, so they could have it 24/7. So, we're doing some good things. So that they don't have to ask us and we don't have to charge them, so they can do it themselves. It makes it always better. We recommend approval of the fees as listed to allow the county to recover the actual costs related for the process.
Okay, any questions?
Available for questions?
No. Okay. It is a public hearing on these fees, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board about this, now would be the time. Seeing and hearing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
We approve the request from the treasure tax collector, item five.
Madam Chairman, before we take the vote, I just, I will support it, I just, just raises the concern that we have when we delay in these processes of recovering fees and we end up with increases that in some cases are, you know, over 100% increases. And I just think that it does not look well for the county to have to make these kinds of, you know, percentage increases. I recognize the reason because we haven't done anything for the last eight or 10 years and everything's gone up and so when you, when you total it all up, it, I'm not questioning the numbers, I'm just saying it doesn't look good, like good business practice in my stand, from my standpoint, to have to make these kinds of increases because we've delayed in seeking these improvements.
Well, we have a new treasure tax collector who obviously is following the new strategic plan at the county. How'd I do Rita, was that?
I'm not blaming Rita.
Good, they gave Ronnie. We did not look at all the fees yet as we have not had time to do anything. We picked on the ones we knew were out of alignment a great deal and that's why we're looking at all of them every year as much as we can and be coming to you next year on the other ones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes please. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. I believe that items six and seven are held over. Is that correct? We have to open the hearings?
We need to open, announce them and open the public hearings and if anyone is here to comment, we need to take those comments today, but you'll want to announce early the board's intention to continue.
Can we do this together or we'll be doing it separately?
I think we need to do it separately, I think these are two different matters.
Okay. Item six, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on item six, now would be the time. Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close it, bring it back and when are we rescheduling it for Michelle? Okay, rescheduled to May 20th.
Motion to continue to May 20th.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, cast your votes please. Passes unanimously, thank you. Public hearing number seven, request for the, for more implementations to the redevelopment project areas. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Anyone here wishing to address us? Seeing none, we'll close it for now and bring it back to the board for action.
Same day. Motion to continue to May 20th.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, cast your votes please. Passes unanimously, rescheduled to May 20th. All right, did we miss anything? Oh, yes, we did. Our addendum item, thank you. Supervisor? Okay, we have our addendum item. Request from County Counsel to discuss and direct staff in regard to the format of the significant exposure to litigation items listed in the closed session section of the Board Supervisors meeting agendas. CAO going to handle this, you're going to handle this Ms. Roberts?
I'll try to handle it. If there's any questions, I will of course try to answer them.
All right.
Visaya, Visaya Times Delta, City Editor Jim Howe contacted our office about two and a half weeks ago, excuse me, and requested that the board, or that the county consider some changes to the way it lists closed session items on the board's agenda. Now, we believe in our office that the county is fully complying with the Brown Act in listing closed sessions. We took an informal survey of what other counties did at one of our association meetings last week and about 50% of the counties list closed sessions the way Mr. Howe suggested and about 50% listed in the way we do. We believe that what he's actually asking here is basically a formatting change. We already, the county already puts all the information required by the Brown Act in its closed session agenda. What he's requesting would be that we identify the specific types of information by a reference to citation, to the statutory citations in the Brown Act where that information is required. This is basically, we think, a formatting change. It would be providing, we think, more information that's actually required by the Brown Act, but whatever your board wants to do, we'll try to implement.
Okay. Quick question. As I look at our closed session agenda, I see the code section 54956.9 and then A and the next one down is a B and the next one down is a B. Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about these letters, these A's? Because at one time, I think I remember seeing A through E or something like that. Is that what we're talking about, missing the letter?
Actually, right. Actually, what would happen, the only one that would be impacted on today's closed session would be item B and item C and what would happen is we would add government code section 54956.9B and we, it'd be, it'd still be one, but it would be and paragraph three and then like item B would be- three, and then, like, item B would be paragraph three, subparagraph capital B. And then for C, it would be three in parentheses and capital A in parentheses, subsection E.
And does that provide any information that is beyond what, you know, my question is, I look at this, you know, I don't think I've ever looked at those government code sections as they appear on here.
You know, the only-
What additional information does it provide that Mr. Howe wants?
Well, it just, it refers you right into the Brown Act section then, which indicates that certain of the information would be available to the public under the Public Records Act, basically, and another provision in the Brown Act. Now, I could use another example.
But isn't it already?
It's already available. We just don't have a subsection that says this is available as Public Records Act. A better example would be something we don't have on the agenda now. For example, if we meet into closed session on a claim that's been filed with the county, that would be paragraph, I'm not going to do the whole numbers, B, subsection B, paragraph three, subparagraph C, and that would, we would, how we ordinarily list them is the claim of such and such regarding accident on such and such a date. Under the Brown Act, the people are entitled then to use that information and go and get a copy of the claim that's been filed, and that's-
So, in that case, would you say, let them know that this is a tort claim, and they can go get a copy of the claim?
Right. But actually, when we say-
Does the additional members make some difference in that?
We don't think so, because when we disclose that this is a claim by such and such and such and such a date, that gives them the information they need to go to make the Public Records Act request, which, of course, is by law they're entitled to, so.
How much additional work is this?
It's just more, you know, more paperwork on the part of staff. We would probably increase, we actually have a public record that we file after the board's closed sessions that's available to members of the public, and that would probably extend that report by half a page or a page. It's three or four pages now. And then, we would just be checking additional boxes on that report, where we, right now, we just have it down as facts known to plaintiff, and then we put in all this additional information that's required by the Brown Act.
So, you'd create checkboxes in front of, like, page two of this staff report?
It wouldn't be on that. It would be the Brown Act memo that we file with the clerk of the board after the closed sessions. But then, it would, there would be additional, like I said, a couple additional statutory sites on your agenda. Now, there's a couple of ways of approaching this. We can either do it in writing, or we can, if you want, start providing that information to the board verbally at the closed session, like at the meeting. So, announce before we go into closed session, this is under, you know, subparagraph B, C, D.
Oh, so in other words, it wouldn't be written here, you would just announce it?
We could do it orally if you wanted to, or we could do it in writing, whichever the board wants, or, like we say, we think we're sufficiently disclosing at this point anyhow, and giving enough information for the public to know that there are public records they can request.
Well, how do we stack up against other counties? I mean-
Fifty-fifty.
Well, the informal poll that we took in an association meeting last week, and again, this was County Council's association meeting, approximately half of the counties identify it by the subparagaths, and the other half don't, like us.
It's an interesting item. You know, in these circumstances, it's, you know, there's part of me that says, we're already meeting the law, I mean, we're doing what we're supposed to do, and somebody wants us to do more, and I guess that's okay, but then, does that look like we weren't doing the right thing in the first place when we are?
Well, there's another aspect, there's another aspect to this, Madam Chairman, and that is the old concept that no good deed goes unpunished, and that is, when you agree to go beyond what you're required to do, you just open up one more opportunity to screw up someplace. So, if you report the wrong one, then you, right now, we're saying, okay, we're stopping at a certain level. Now, if we report it down to the next level, and not intentionally, but we make an error, we violate the Brown Act. Now, by reporting it at a sublevel above that, we're eliminating that possibility. So, you know, it's like we could always go one more, one more, one more, but if you go beyond what you're required to do, there's additional work involved, and there's additional opportunities to screw up. And that's the concern, I guess, that I have, is that you do what you have to do. This is a very, this is a pretty transparent system, you know, and-
As it is now. The section-
Are we going to get a new lawyer to check us and make sure we're doing it right?
I will take a new lawyer, if you want to give us a new lawyer.
No, I mean additional staff.
We could always use additional staff. The actual language in the government code that Mr. Howe is referring to is the agency may be required to provide additional information on the agenda or an oral statement prior to the closed session. We think the counties are already doing that when we make disclosures like we did under item B of today's agenda, where we go in and we try to list all the information we have that, you know, is readily available to the public.
I'm sure. I don't have a problem adding the extra language on there. I understand Supervisor Worley that there is, I'm not going to say what he said, but there is the opportunity for human error. There always is the opportunity for human error. I found some stuff in one of the items we had today where numbers just didn't add up. So, you know, is the human error factor a concern to you, Julia?
Actually, not, because it had to be a knowing violation of the Brown Act to actually incur any sort of criminal penalties. Otherwise, if we do make an error or violate the Brown Act unintentionally, we have a 30-day cure period to, in the future, correct that, and hopefully, you know, we won't make a lot of clerical mistakes.
I have no problem personally including the extra information. It sounds like it might end up being another page with boxes you check off on it.
Well, as I said, I don't either, but I, having lived my life this long, in my mind, in the public's mind, I don't want them to misconstrue this into, oh, the board wasn't doing what they're supposed to do, and so now they're going to.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this item in public, and I think-
Thanks.
We've heard a lot of different philosophies on this, but legally, we are within our legal rights to do what we've been doing, and I concur with Supervisor Worley that sometimes you can go too far. And I believe that our system is adequate as is, and I would make that statement, and when you close the public hearing, let's move on.
Rather than print it, would you be in support of reading it, as Julia said? I mean, or just leave it as is?
I'd leave it as is.
Not try to confuse the issue.
I'd leave it as is.
Leave it as is. Supervisor Ennis, you have a thought?
I think leave it as it is.
I can support that.
Well, and I'm not trying to make light of it, you know, if it's important, if we're not following the law or the rules, then, you know, we need to do that. That's just was my concern, that if we already are, I don't want this to look like some, if we were to change it, as some admission that somehow we weren't following the law, because I believe we were. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
From me?
Well, if this is a public hearing, I don't see a whole lot of people out here talking.
Well, it's not a public hearing, is it?
No, it's not a public hearing, but if you want to take-
Maybe he wants to talk. We'll let him.
Go ahead and take your badge off. It's okay.
You're in a fishbowl. We can hear you.
It's all right. Okay, well, if the board would like to take action, we have documentation for our records in the future when we have to address this. So.
Well, the request was for discussion and direction of staff, and I think I'm hearing the supervisor saying that they're satisfied with the way things are, and I'm in that camp as well, I think. If there's more explicit, I mean, if it needs to be explicitly done, then let the legislature design the system, make the changes. I'm comfortable with what we're doing. And then, again, not to hide the ball in any way, it's just that I think we're being very, as transparent as we need to be, and that's-
If council were to choose to announce that, that would be in council's court?
You say you're basically doing that now.
Right, we're basically doing it now.
Second, then.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. And everybody knows what it is? Yes? Okay. Motion passes unanimously for the, what we believe to be following the law and the status quo. And now I close my agenda. Public comments? Anybody wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Board of Supervisors matters. I'm going to start with District Five.
Oh, District Five.
This is a test.
You looked it out.
This is a test.
She knew better.
I started to start with Alan, but I'm starting with you, it's supervisor.
Well, I'm pretty proud of the Granite Hills High School. Of course, in Porterville, of course, I'm also very proud of Porterville High, Manatchee, and Strathmore also that are within our district.
You're just darn proud today.
I'm just proud. I'm just proud. I'm just proud to be here. Okay. But anyway, last year, as a lot of people know, they won the National Scholastic Press Association's Pacemaker Award, which is like the Pulitzer Prize, and they have won it again this year, back-to-back. There was over 5,500 kids involved from over 45 states that went to Anaheim, California, and the Grizzly Gazette once more came out on top. So, we're going to be having them to the board, I think, on the 13th, and they're going to come over and give us a little bit of a presentation, and we've got a proclamation for them, but pretty proud, pretty proud of those kids. It was 26 kids involved from, I guess it's a consortium from reading in the paper. There are some kids from Porterville High and from Manatchee that also work on this Grizzly Gazette, so it's kind of a community high school award, so, but Grizzly, the Gazette is the one that is responsible for it. So, very proud of these kids. We hear so much bad things out there. It's good to hear some good.
That was a Porterville area regional-
Regional newspaper.
All right. Regional to Porterville. Thank you, supervisor. That's good news. Like to have those. Supervisor Ashida? And what district are you, sir?
One.
I know. Mr. Sanders used to like to make issue that he was number one.
Last Wednesday, Jeff Forbes and I went to Sacramento, and I testified in front of a Senate, I gave testimony-
Bet that was fun.
-of a Senate Water Subcommittee for Disadvantaged Communities, and it appeared to me that the statement I made was the fact that they should get the facts together before they look to making new rules on disadvantaged communities or any water issues. So-
Sounds like a simple request.
...it probably was a revelation for those people in the meeting. Then, Jeff and I joined the Latino Water Coalition, who were having meetings with the electeds in Sacramento. We met with Lawrence Wolk, we met with various legislators from the Senate and from the Assembly. Our last meeting was with the governor, and basically, the governor said because of the infighting between the Speaker of the Assembly and the Senate, Parada Nunez, that we would probably not see a water bond being passed through the state legislature.
Batman and Robin fighting again.
Yeah, they're fighting each other, so that more or less, it mixes our chance of getting legislative-
So that nothing happened. Great.
I think what it points out to us is that we're there, is we're probably going to have to do this by initiative. I don't think they'll ever come to consensus on a water bond, especially Assemblywoman Wolk, who is now running for the Senate. Her main concern and the main concern of most, a lot of legislators are just the delta. They only want to look at the delta. Our group, there was probably 14 of us from metropolitan water, from mayors of different cities, a broad coalition, we were there saying, we want a state fix to our water issue. We want a state system and do it as a state system. We have legislators that say, oh, but we've set aside money for your region, for regional projects, competitive grants. So, they keep us fighting amongst ourselves for dollars in our region, and that is not solving a statewide issue. But everybody in that coalition that was in those meetings understood that we were there for a state fix, not for a regional project. I think a lot of them were surprised at the response we did receive back from some of the electeds we have in Sacramento. We had a water commission meeting yesterday, and we set up an ad hoc committee to form a subcommittee to address the water needs of our disadvantaged communities. It was a very lively meeting, and last night, we had another organizing meeting of the stop Route One of power lines, and-
You activist, you.
We probably have about eight committees, and we are getting organized, and we're rapidly becoming a political voice. So, thank you.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you, supervisor.
Supervisor Worley?
Just had a busy week last weekend. A lot of us were involved in the global warming summit held at the Marriott last Thursday, and then Friday was a blueprint meeting up in Fresno, and I'm not sure how valuable our time was spent there, but we were there representing Tulare County and being responsible elected officials. Tomorrow, the San Joaquin Valley Air Police Control District Board will be meeting, and the topic of adoption of the rule concerning PM 2.5 will be taken up, and I anticipate that the rule will likely be passed tomorrow. And that, of course, has other implications for our businesses and for individuals. Specifically, the most, the greatest impact to most people probably will be the fireplace rule, because PM 2.5 tends to be a seasonal problem, just like ozone. In this case, oftentimes in winter time, when we have our lid over the valley, and smoke and so forth creates a problem. So, on those bad air days, we'll be looking at curtailment of fireplace, of burnings and so forth, and so that will affect the citizens of our county and our valley.
So, it'll be even stronger than it is now?
Yes, because we've only dealt with it at this point for PM 10, and now we're going to the 2.5, and it's been very effective, by the way. I mean, the public doesn't like it, and I understand that, but we have been very effective in meeting our, we meet the PM 10 target ahead of schedule, probably three years, and we have every expectation we'll meet the 2.5 standard also. But got to do things to get there, and that's one of them, so we'll be taking that up tomorrow.
Okay. Supervisor Cox?
Well, I have some exciting news. Yesterday-
Gang went over.
No, not gang, sorry. Yesterday, Jed, Eric, and I went over to meet with the general manager of the radio station Q 97, which is not a station I listen to, because it's a hip-hop, you know, rock, rap, that kind of stuff.
And you're not a cool dude.
I'm not that cool. And we talked to them about the Step Up event we're having May 22nd, and it was great to see how that company just opened up their arms and says, we're all in. What can we do? And so, we have a media partner, I would call them, a radio partner for the event for May 22nd, and very happy to have them on board, and they actually offered their other radio station as well, which is 100 on the dial. So, excited to have those folks, and we're fine as we go out and we start talking to people about the Step Up effort, the anti-gang efforts that we're working on in the county, how the businesses are just, you know, all in, wholeheartedly supporting the effort in any way they can. So, that's very good news, so we're excited about that. This evening, from 4:30 to about 8 o'clock, we will be hearing auditions from local talent, bands, soloists, dancing, that'll perform during the event, May 22nd, and we're doing that over at Visitero High School. I think we have at least a dozen registrants for the auditions tonight, and I'm not going to be judging the auditions. I'm just going to be there and see how things go, but very excited about that. A great response from the community. We actually only put that word out about a little over a week, maybe a week and a half ago, that we're going to have the auditions tonight and have that many local folks from, and also Supervisor Ashida, some young folks from Farmersville are coming over as well to audition for that event, so.
So, Supervisor Ashida going to be a judge?
Supervisor Ashida is going to be in Sacramento with the rest of the board supervisors- at CSAT, so-
Oh, on the 22nd?
So I would appreciate in the future that, check your calendar.
We, we actually, the, May 22nd was picked because the school district actually picked that day, and they donated the LJ Williams Theater and their services, their tables, their security, their personnel, so that, they picked the date, not, not me.
Please give, please give our regrets that we're not there because-
We will.
CSAT.
Some of us might be here. I think I'll be around.
Ennis wants, Ennis wants to do it.
You going to try out tonight, Supervisor?
Well, Alan and I are going to do one of those-
Is it a comedy routine?
Comedy act.
Yeah, that scares me. Really scares me.
We actually have an interform, no swearing, no references to-
Last Friday, on behalf of the board, I presented a proclamation to the Farmer of the Year, which was actually the Farmers of the Year, twin brothers who've been in the community for a while, and I, I, I'm just mentioning it simply because after our crop report today, they participate in the number one industry. The Farmer of the Year is given not just on the fact that, that you're a successful agriculturalist, it really has to do with community service over and above agriculturalists. So these folks had, these brothers had quite a contribution to the community in many ways, but the crop report today just sends home that message to us that we are ag, and ag happens. Counsel?
Where water flows.
Yep. Have we finished our closed session items, or?
No, unfortunately, we still have some closed session items. It'd be items A, C, D, and E as listed on your agenda.
Are there any sub-paragraphs to go with that?
Not today.
Not today, all right.
Oh, we do not-
I'm serious about that, though. If we need to announce that, then- So be it.
No sub-paragraphs today, and we're going to pull item F and not have it. We already met on item B.
All right, you expect any announcements?
We are not expecting any announcements out today.
Okay, all right, thank you all. We'll adjourn to closed session.